Meeting's called to order at 6:06. The Runnymede Board of Education meeting is called to order. The Board of Education is in compliance with its Sunshine Regulations. This meeting was appropriately advertised by notifying the retrospect as well as posting notices in Beryl Hall, the Runnymede Post Office, Maryville School, Alliance Bingham School, and Grace Downing School. For the work session, we will have a roll call of board members, please.
Patricia here. Gerald Buckheim here. Amy Farry. Patricia Smith.
Here.
Lynn Terrell.
Here.
Angel Beebe. Naomi Davidson. Maria Benzarella.
Here.
Samantha Spalding.
Here.
And of course.
All right, there's a few, there is not an agenda. Mr. Anugieh has a list of things that he would like to talk about in executive session before we go into the, we'll go over the agenda very briefly and the short presentation.
Sorry, work session. Appreciate everybody. I sent you copies home of the school calendar for revised provisions for this year as well as for next year. And I may have had a lot of time to discuss that, so I'll let you have it first if you judge your time. I also'd like to, Mr. Wake has been doing a presentation a little bit later in this work session regarding character education moving forward here at both schools. We're gonna hold that off until later on in the presentation so we don't take up, I think last time that little off track at times. We didn't have the time to go over the agenda during our work session to discuss those things. So, any questions on the, let's go to the current school year, 2013-14. As you can see, we're proposing to come to school on April 17.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth? I'm sorry, 17th, which we make up one of our days. Right now, we are five days we have to make up. We've had six snow days, we've already made up one. If we were able to make up, as you can tell on that calendar there, make up the, April 17th, we make up a snow day, and then we can tack on days for the 12th, 13th, 16th, and 17th for students who choose. So, the last day for students would be June 17th, and the last day for teachers would be June 18th. In all our county roundtable meetings, you know, we've had, people kind of come up with ideas on how to make up those days. You can't do a split session if you couldn't bring the kids in from seven to 11, consider it a half day, then send them home for lunch or whatever, or have them free, or bring them back to the campus. Can't add minutes on to each day to have that count.
Now, why can't we do that in our state?
Which is something we wouldn't be able to do by another.
Because I know in the state of Delaware, that's exactly what they do.
There's another, and some, and some are on Saturday.
Pleasantville's on Saturdays.
Some schools are doing it a couple Saturdays, some schools are bringing kids in for...
That was my...
Pleasantville's high school.
Well, I don't think, does anyone think it's a problem on the 18th? Because I'm looking at the 25th, 26th, so I don't think that's a big issue.
I'm just throwing that down there, just to, for future reference.
I think that we've been proactive, we brought them in on...
One day, right?
Fourth of July, I mean, fourth of July.
Yeah.
Did you see where I'm thinking? On the outside day?
That's one of the being school tells, is what I'm thinking.
Yeah. But I, I think that, I don't, does there any, anyone have an issue with that?
No, I'm just saying, for future reference, is there any other way?
You could do, I mean, I got invited to a, to a virtual school today, so you're making it up virtually. I don't think that would be an option, part of the elementary level, but that could be a way. This, this winter was very...
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a year in a year to have this many days. One of the things we already have to make sure we do for next year is to, with our delayed opening schedule, maybe to cut that back to a 90-minute delay so we can make sure we fit in, you have that four-hour in your session time.
That's correct.
You know, so you balance the lunches, and kids are eating in different places and stuff like that, so we'll make sure if we did like a 90-minute delay, which I think this winter especially probably could've done that, the problem's our busing situation. With the Black Forest bike, Gloucester Township, doing two-hour delay, kind of, so buses and shit, we share everything, so we're already looking to do that, maybe that delay, and then over the summer developing a delayed opening schedule. I'd have some of the teachers concerned missing that first and second period sometimes here consistently, because it seems to, I'm trying to, Mr. Peely, it's a little easier to elementary school level, because you have those kids all day, have Mr. Peely tweak this schedule after the second, second or third delayed opening day to make sure those kids are getting instruction time as well.
Yeah, I think that's a great, I think that's a great idea.
The only thing I would say, and I'm not trying, we wouldn't push to change this, I mean, you've let us out, but down the road, if we had more like that, I, I tend to read a lot, and I've been watching a lot of stories on the impact these snow days have had on schools, and research is showing that by adding days on at the end of the year, they're not as productive as reducing spring break or other methods, because mentally, students are shutting down.
Done.
They're probably done.
So, as, as one of the board members, not so much, but maybe in the future, we should rethink that, instead reduce spring break, or consider what Pleasantville School District is doing now, the shore, they are doing Saturday school for four and a half hours to meet that four-hour instruction time, that's making up a whole day. And if, let's say we had four days to make up, you do two of those days with periods one through four, two of those days with periods five through eight, so that they're getting an equal balance as far as instruction. But I'm not asking that we're considered changing what you've already meant, but I think all of us that have worked in the business, the kids and the staff are mentally winding down in June, it's not as productive, just isn't.
That's what I'm trying to get...
They do take the spring break for the running breaks. You know, and the Florida Monday and the Easter Monday may not be comfortable. Now, is it a feasible thing to have Saturday hours here with our contract with our staff? How does that work, does that...
That would have to be something I've, we have to discuss with the union, I mean, the difficult thing, you know, I'm not sure many people would choose school over basketball, or school over, if there's religious concerns as well, it could be bad. So, that would have to be a factor.
Right, I just think, again, another avenue to be explored, just to make sure we don't get caught in the same scenario.
Not many, not many districts are doing the Saturday. They, they recycle it.
Two, right, two in the state, right, exactly.
And some parts of the state have more... Some part of the states have more days off, because they lost days to no electricity and things like that, we didn't, thank God, didn't have to do it.
I don't, I was thinking more like, where the...
Pleasantville.
Pleasantville High School.
Pleasantville has their own cafeteria workers, and we're dependent on meals for all the districts, so I think that's, that's one of the biggest obstacles for me in even switching on the schedule, you've got to make sure kids eat.
Yeah.
You know what I mean, so...
Probably the only option you have other than extending is the spring break, having just Friday and Monday off.
That's all we have this year.
That's all we have this year.
That's all we have this year.
Oh, I'm missing that.
Now, we had spring, we were scheduled for Thursday, Friday. Now you just have Friday.
Okay, I apologize.
And I hope next year it still's like that.
Any other questions on the calendar?
Just a lot of days.
And then, this year, that and when next year?
Yeah, next year.
Hasn't really changed too much, as far as the feedback we got regarding openings and throughout the early fall times. One of the changes would be that November, we look to leave that election, come to school on Election Day, which is November 4th, and then it'd be a professional development for the kids, for the staff on that Wednesday, and the kids would be off. Right, this year they came in, kids came in Monday, they were off Tuesday, came back Wednesday, were off Thursday and Friday. We suggested the administrative team, I've been speaking with some of the teachers, some prayer in for Monday, it's a short week regardless, prayer in Monday and Tuesday, teachers have the PD on Wednesday, and then the staff can eventually...
I think that's better.
Just speak with the borough to get, even that, remove from, possibly.
It's already been applied.
It's been applied, so they were, Dad talked with the board of elections, I know everything else. Right now, we moved it from the old purpose room back to the gym for safety concerns, but they were looking to have it moved out entirely.
It's not, it's not just the borough, it's the state that's actually asking the borough to have it moved out of an educational facility for safety purposes.
So, that's what we look at in November.
That's what venues we're looking at now.
Well, your, the, the problem, just so everybody understands, if it does remain in schools, because each, that only two districts are allowed to, that you can only take a total of two districts at a polling place, and in Runnymede, other than Harry Williams Building and the Borough Hall, there really aren't two, you know, non-educational facilities to do it.
Yeah, okay.
They probably could, but I don't know that that, yeah. But what they did is they, they applied to the board of elections to utilize Harry Williams for three districts and the Borough for three districts, for three, yeah, for three districts. And guess what? Everyone in the state of New Jersey, everyone across the country is looking to move it out of. It's not just us. So, they are gonna, you know, they are gonna probably have to waive some, you know, some of those previous...
Yeah, they, I think they're doing it in some other places.
A lot of other places do it, because some towns don't have three, you know, places.
They've got the fire, kind of the fire hall.
Yeah, well, they applied under this, under the two, and are hoping it, so...
There's scout building.
It's not handicap accessible, and we're talking about areas that are handicap accessible, and scout building is not.
You know, you look at next, for winter break next year, with the holiday falling, it will be Thursday, the first, if we spend that for the second, not to bring the kids in for one day on the second as well.
And that's what most districts are doing.
That's a good energy saver. More fire facilities for one, right?
So, that's what we're looking at. As far as conferences, December and March, and I know we type out, depending on what takes, shakes up, the teacher union, everything else is working on, you know, adjusting our conference schedule, I encourage the teachers, even if the kid's not having trouble, I encourage them to invite the parents in. I know sometimes we don't invite the parents who, because the struggles do, but one, I mean, I go to everything at my son's doors. How can they do better? If they're good at math, why can't they do better? There's some areas, every kid's gonna have weaknesses or areas of growth, so, you know, I'd kind of like to have them in for the three days of conference as well, extend that time, because, yeah, and we have some big numbers in some of our grade levels, we have 25 kids, bring them in for a 15-minute conference, and only, it's impossible to do it over two days, you know, and then give the parents the option, more options as possible, so...
That's a shame.
So, the number of half-days have not changed in this schedule, just one of the half-day PDs, we want to change it back to a third day for conference.
Well, there's one year, isn't this, remember three days this year?
That was one of them with a half-day PD.
And my concern was that, like, everybody's not, everybody's not invited in, I've never been invited to a conference in the spring, but, so that's why Mark's saying he's gonna suggest it.
You need to have days on the night.
Parents. Oh, believe me, let him grow up, I'm worried he'll turn...
So, that's basically the nuts and bolts of it. Is there anything else to add? So, I was gonna share this, if you're comfortable, I was gonna share it with the teachers union, get their input, if there's no major changes, we will have this approved at the equal meeting.
Sounds good.
Okay.
And this, this, how many snow days are about there with this?
There's no snow days.
There's no, so they're out of ten, right?
Yes.
We're out of ten, so if we have a week of snow days, they're getting out.
We're still 17.
Even as much snow we've got this year, the 18th...
That's early, listen, I remember, hello, Trenton had you down till, well...
Steve, you graduate in December, I mean, December, the holiday place, the 25th.
So, we'll do, we'll approve tonight's for the revised 13-14, we'll get all that stuff out.
Now, is graduation scheduled?
We have to file this, because some things have been adjusted, we'll get all that, eight gradations, the dance, graduation, we'll get all those things concerned, because there's a night where it conflicts with, I'm not sure, a pre-comirmation.
A pre-comirmation in that week as well.
So, I'm sure we'll do it the same time, so, working on that.
Late this year, too.
All right, something else, we met, administrative team up with the Education Foundation members last week, gave away some grants for our teachers again. So, they were gonna come see, yeah, but I don't think they were, a couple months ago, I'm not sure they would come, so hopefully they can come back to another meeting to discuss ways they're looking to enhance the organization, some changes, ideas they've offered us as well, for the next number of things we did for you. So, one of the things they asked us, and I told the girls about, is creating a special ev, a special revenue fund for education.
You can do it basically the same way you have the NAPO grant, you create a special, special revenue fund, which is a restricted revenue from locals, from private sources, and then they can designate whatever they want that money to be spent for, it doesn't co-mingle with your regular operating budget or anything like that. So, whatever money they award out, if they have any criteria for the grants, whether, you know, sometimes they want it to be in technology, or they might want it to be in environmental stuff, or whatever it might be, they can set those criteria out, and then the teachers can make their purchases through the board office, and it'll be paid for from that fund.
So, that's one of the concerns I had, so moving forward, I guess we have that approved the next meeting?
Yeah.
Is everybody in? And they're doing some good things.
So, this, my brain is, I'm like one step behind you, the special revenue then is still part of the Education Foundation?
Yes.
It's just another designation as far as how people can contribute? Okay, thanks.
And we'll announce, maybe next meeting, we'll announce to the board what they're doing with that, there's some good stuff on the work side of that. Also, being a member of the Rotary, the Rotary's also going to Runnymede, Fella Agreed, is also looking to do some educational grant opportunities, they just kind of started about two weeks ago, some ideas are thrown out there, so I've got to keep it up to date for those things, because they also actually like to contribute, which, you know, will always take the additional resources and revenue to help, yeah, our kids, so, they've been great to us so far, helping our families, yeah, when we pass the holiday time, it'd be awesome, so we appreciate the help. Bookmates, I don't have them on here, but I was gonna talk, on the agenda, but you wanna talk a little about the bookmates, or like that approved next month?
Yeah, there's a, it's an organization that's affiliated with Jewish and Catholic faiths, they're a nonprofit organization, basically retired teachers, I'm very familiar with the program, they basically volunteer their time to come read to students, typically at the lower levels, they said they were up to third grade, once a week for about 30 minutes, and you basically target a population of students that either need to strengthen their literacy, or they may not be getting the one-on-one attention at home. So, it's based on teacher recommendation, and it's no cost to the district, but I'm recommending to Mark that he put on the agenda for you guys, redo some of their literature and consider it for next school year. Again, they're a great organization, I met with the director on Friday, and she's thrilled to come to another district, there are about 40 districts in Burlington County and Gloucester County, and they just do great things for kids, and if you Google and a lot of, a lot of positive things will come up, but just another way to strengthen our literacy programming in primary grades.
I saw an interesting story last night on the news about a school working with one of the shelters for animals, and focused on a small little boy who was in first grade, and he was behind in his reading abilities, and then showed an interest in reading, and they did this program with abandoned cats, and these children would, on a Saturday, would go over to where the cats are, and they would read to the cats. By the end of first grade, he was reading a second-grade reading lover, and loves to read now, so I thought that was an interesting way to get young children...
Yeah, so many different things, Mark students, and that one-on-one attention is just so wonderful, so I think they'll be pleased with it.
And Mark has some information on it, it will be in our agenda, in our package for next board meeting, so we can all approve, look at it, look at it as well. Thank you.
And that's all I had, agenda, 17 and, and, yeah, we, we got to have executive session this evening, which is, it's a long, we discussed a few student matters, and I'm glad we're actually keeping aware of what's going on, so, question called to the agenda, yes, we can...
Do you want to go through the agenda, or would you like to present? Would you like to do, is he presenting during work session?
Does anybody have, does anybody have any questions, any board members have any questions on the agenda?
All right, let's go, all right, let's go through the agenda real quick. So, under...
If we're able.
If we go through principals' reports, and all of the reports, superintendent reports, secretary reports, nurses' reports, special education reports, building and grounds report...
I heard a question for Sean, I guess it's, just Sean, park assessments in, at New Jersey Yes, do you have dates set up for them yet?
Dates for the park assessment pilot?
Yes.
Or dates for park assessment 14th, 15th?
Yeah, for pilot, for pilot testing.
For the pilot, fourth grade teachers will be piloting the assessment next week, beginning March 31st, there are gonna be three gigs set up, we've spoken with the two classes that will be piloting it, those students will be taking letters home at the end of this week to let their parents know that they are taking the assessment, and that it's not counting specifically for the students, but we're trying to have the system to see what it looks like, and build cover for the district. Seventh grade will be the week after, and that's for two days.
Both of them are two days, or just fourth is one day?
Fourth is three days, and they're about 15 minutes per each assessment, and then seventh grade is two days, the following week, the week of April 7th, and that will be for about 75 minutes per assessment period.
Any other questions on the reports?
Well, I'm glad to see we're gonna have a presentation for character, that was one of my questions, what programs did this committee bring forth with their annual, so that was a good one. And, see, I have another comment, I saw the amount of minutes on those fire drills and those safety drills, thank you very much.
No problem.
That's all, that's all, yeah.
All right, I will, well, well, I'll continue now, there, for, on the reports, we'll go over them in, during the regular, so we'll go to new business, property and transportation, any issues there?
Just a, just a little more clarification on item three and four, I guess we're required by law to do that?
Yeah, and what the situation there is that none of the other bus companies can do it because of the timing, so we have to use a cab.
Okay, and that's the same with number four?
Yes.
Okay. Next question I have would be till we get the personnel.
Okay, any other questions on the property or transportation? Okay, on the personnel?
Number three, Donna Baker, substitute nurse, I thought we used Viata for our substitute nurses, because it's, are we going in a different direction or...
I'm not going in a different direction, it's, I mean, sometimes we can't, well, especially with some less, so, so, I'm thinking maybe just, okay, options, some is there, so that's three.
That's good, to grab substitute nurses whenever you can, because they're hard to come by, they're very hard to come by, that's a good, I was glad to see that.
Okay.
Under, are we, can we go personnel there? Yes? Okay, on their finance, I know there's...
I have a question for...
I just want...
Number four?
Oh, I said here, as far as tuition contract with a registered student who never attended a Boontown School District, documentation, do we have documentation that states that this child never attended this school district through this Boontown homeless liaison?
We just discussed that with Mayor Roy.
I've been speaking with Michelle DeMaddies, who is our social worker here, she also deals with our homeless students at the last board meeting, was where I was concerned about the number of students who were paying for, for homeless being sent out. In speaking with Michelle, and also working with Alice in the business office, we are paying for two students currently who are being sent to other school districts that are considered to be homeless from Runnymede. So, it's only two students who we're making payments for, prior to any payments being made though, the district must show proof that they were homeless from Runnymede in order for them to claim that cost.
Right, but this, my question here is, do we have any documentation that this child was re, was registered at Boontown School District, did not, but never attended via the Boontown's homeless liaison, how do we...
Before any payment is ever paid out from Runnymede, we collect that information. As a student registers in each spot, and just as students register in Runnymede, and we actually brought this up very recently, since we just did kindergarten registration, but there's a form, and if you answer a question, so the second you answer yes to one of the questions on our registration paperwork, it automatically triggers another piece of paper that gets put in there, which we then determine whether or not the student would be meeting with Michelle DeMaddies, our social worker, the parent, to discuss their living situation, where they're living, and whether or not they would fall under those circumstances. In this case, this student would have technically fallen under those circumstances when they registered in the other school districts, which is why their homeless liaisons have been in contact with Michelle, our homeless liaison, and they need to provide paperwork every time that happens. We then keep track of those students to find out where they currently are, and we need to know what their start date is in each of the districts, because that depends on how much time we need to actually pay for their attending the other school. So, the answer to that question is yes, and money is not paid out until we have proof that they're coming from our district.
Thanks.
Sure. We have two currently.
That we are paying, yes.
Was that your question as well?
Yeah, so, thank you, Lynn, you're being kind.
Sure. And under 14, you are going to attend?
Yes, I'll be taking a place at Naomi Davidson, I'll be there with you that night at Somerville, this Wednesday, because she had knee surgery, so she's, she's only...
So, where it says Naomi Davidson originally approved?
Yeah.
That's Buckheim.
Now, you'll be there with the parent and the student?
I think both guardians were invited, student, myself, and any board members that are interested in going.
Okay, well, I'll look for you when I get over there. Do you know where we were, we will be reporting, like, is it in the auditorium?
I think it is in the hall, perfect room, it's, it's, I have a good work model, so I can get it, I can see it between, um...
Okay, thank you. That'd be great.
Thank you very much.
If it's in the school, the ones I've been to, it's usually in cafeteria.
Cafeteria, okay.
And stuff like that, yeah, mess up another place.
Sure, sure, okay.
Any other questions on the professional, on the workshops?
Just want to also let you know, the town show fundraiser, 16, before this went to print, regarding what funds will be collected, I believe, with the recent passing of our school, which was, when she was involved with the mom at the dollhouse, charities, I think we're going to look into directing funds to that, that would happen at 13.
Now, who from our district is sponsoring this town show?
It's the student council?
Is it student council?
Yeah.
And any questions on the curriculum?
Just, I don't want to, just for a little more clarification, the statement here, it did not occur as defined.
For number one, what clarification were you looking for on the report? There were two situations that were reported, anytime that, really, anytime the word bowling is used in any way, shape, or form, an investigation takes place. So, as soon as an investigation takes place, it's usually either Ms. Callahan or Ms. Beatt over Bowles, who will conduct the investigation, they will speak with any student involved, and from there, they then share their results, not only with myself, but the building level principals, and then a determination is made, which you then say is a disposition on the right-hand side, and every single thing that we investigate must be recorded to the board at each month.
Okay.
For number two, one of the things they just started coming out with was the grade that they give schools based on performance from 2012, 2013, how many programs we had, how many people we had coming to speak, how many HIV initiatives there were throughout the school, and how much training we gave our staff, the grade was given. The score that you will see, we received a 62, but that is out of 75. The state was supposed to give us a letter grade that we will then have to post on our school website once we receive that, however, we have not received any guidance from receiving this printout that you received this evening showing what the score was. So, as soon as we receive that, since it has to be reported to the board, we want to get that to you as soon as possible, but as soon as we receive the additional information, that will get posted.
Thank you very much.
I might just have another question on the reports, for Sean, I just saw this looking through my papers. On your report, Sean, you said under correspondence, you participated in a webinar through real-time, concerning placing 504s online, can you explain that?
Yes. 504 plans for students, many school districts still do printed-out copies that are done individually, one of the issues with that is they are given to teachers at the beginning of every year, and teachers found out that they received it. One of the things that Realtime offers is that we can actually place the 504 plans for students online. Those 504 plans, that become available to any teacher who has that student listed in their schedule, so if you had a student, if you had Wake in your class, and Wake has a 504 plan, you bring up his name, right next to Wake's name, just like it tells if he has an ID, there's now an icon that says 504. So, teachers are automatically triggered now, as they're doing grades and looking at different things, that, let me see what combination needs to be made, make sure that I'm doing everything for the student available.
Great.
Is it update to 504, is it, there's an update maybe to 504? Let's see, that alerts the teacher, no...
Alerts go out, and there's, Realtime is a great system, and we're starting to use it a lot more for different aspects that might not have been used fully previously, trying to streamline things as much as possible. And by doing the 504s online, that's automated documentation for us, that every teacher has gone on and viewed the 504, because we can actually see that those students, teachers have, have been viewing it.
Okay, great, so thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Wink, you're up.
Look at, look at Wink in the classroom.
I know, really. I'm looking at him.
Yeah, I see. One has a scooter on. Here, finally, you got it.
Did you get a leg that you're on?
I came in today to talk with Mr. Wink, and the office said, hold on. He was just here, he must have scooped it out. And I, they met literally. I mean, I knew he was on it, but it was funny the way they said, he scooped it out that fast. Am I anybody's wife?
So, Mr. Wink, Mr. Peely, and a bunch of teachers have been getting together, working on some of the things. At least one of it. Give you a brief ten-minute, or as long as you have.
Let me pull maybe a strong, is this the entire school where teachers, staff, and fourth and fifth are involved in this as well?
This is everyone, yes.
Mr. Wink, take it away. I'll give you the...
Okay, I want to just say to you, I'm excited about being here. I get the opportunity to be the point person with an initiative. And really, if I said to you that word, it's gonna be discussed a little bit tonight. I get to be the point person on something that I really enjoy doing. And I don't want to pretend that this slideshow has all the answers, nor do I want to pretend that I have all the answers here tonight. I've done a lot of research. I feel like I know a lot of things as it relates to Character Ed. And I want to put us as a district in the best place possible for moving forward. That's the idea behind Character Ed. Guess what? Here's the secret. It's always been here. It's been here in Runnymede from before I was here, and some of us way before here. Maybe called something a little different, may have a different title or whatever it is. But the real development of the idea of character education, really in the last ten or twelve years in education, has really done to develop. Most schools now call it a program, we're calling it an initiative, and that's kind of where we are. We're gonna take our school from good to great. Not to say that it wasn't great before, there are aspects that aren't great, but we are going to move in that direction. I like the idea of just kind of starting us off on, you know, the idea that we're on journey. And the journey is never gonna end for us. It's gonna change, it's multifaceted. So there are a lot of different things that are going to play an impact. I'll share with you a slide in a couple of seconds about where I felt we were at the beginning of this school year. And I'll give you guys a little bit of a timeline. And these are some questions that you are constantly going to be thinking about, almost on a daily basis as it relates to character education. Where's our school today? What are we doing well? And then what are we gonna improve? Every day, I ask myself that as an educator, how can I improve for tomorrow? I don't have to mark it cornered being an assistant principal, which I could say to anybody else. And it's a process that's continually developing, continually moving. There's no doubt about history and the importance being stressed upon the moral fiber of individuals. If we look back, and I'm huge proponent in a lot of things that Martin Luther King Jr. stood for in really pushing the development of character and moral standing. And I think that's huge as it comes to education. Here we are now, looking back at years and years and years and years of data, and we are at a point where we are talking about the effect of a person's moral fabric and what that has on our society. We are understanding as educators, we can't just give them the Xs and Os, the one, two, threes, and the ABCs. We need to address some of the issues that come out in character. Here are some standards relative to Character Ed that we want to, you know, we're talking about personal. If you're looking at some of the things here, I gave you guys the PowerPoint slides so you can look at them a little bit closer. But reasons for personal and group growth. You'll see words like community, worldwide, individual, team activities, strategies, analyzing those things. All of these terms we use related to educational topics also relate to Character Ed topics. We want kids to explain, one of my favorites is down here as a science teacher, explaining how character and core ethical values is useful in addressing challenging situations. If you're familiar, give me a quick science lesson, thirty seconds. But basically Alfred Nobel, everybody knows the name for Nobel Peace Prize or the Nobel Prizes. When he was a young man, he worked for his father. He developed, he watched a lot of development through eighteen hundreds, mid-eighteen hundreds. He also, I believe it was a brother to an explosion. And it was related to mitroglycerin, glycerin. He developed a patent that would help safe, make this a little more safe, and it led to the development of dynamite. Dynamite was used in, you know, through the mid-eighteen hundreds into nineteen hundreds to move mountains, make roads, do all that kind of stuff. At the later point in his life, he was regretful of one thing. His invention to safety or to make dynamite a little more safe led to it being used in war. And he was saddened at the fact that people were being killed because he improved a technique to, you know, ultimately what he thought was the better society instead. In that seven years, right before he died, in the last seven years, his brother dies. And they mistakenly imprint his name in the paper. And actually, people celebrate over the fact that he died because they thought he was such a bad guy. In that last seven years, he sets up this whole fund. This fund will run forever as far as the amount of money behind it. That's how much money he did off of his investments and those kinds of things. So should you have to invent something, if you have the ability, that somebody could use to hurt society? And I love when eighth graders get to wrestle with that and go, yes, you should, no, you shouldn't, but you'll make a lot of money, but you'll be rich. So it's really kind of cool to kind of see how that works, see how the kids interact with that. Character Ed Education Partnership Principles, if you, little plug. We have a little section on our school's website, Volt's website, for character education. I'm gonna be putting some links up there. We have a philosophy up there. We're gonna put some other things up there, some cool things up here. But this education partnership here is kind of at the forefront of a lot of information coming out about character education and those kinds of things. But they encourage schools to provide students with service learning projects, school service, conflict mediation, and community service. And that's where we are going to be moving, hopefully, in the near future. I said to you a couple of months ago, I think it was October, we shared with you a little timeline. Phase one was really to assess and evaluate, really look at all of the things that we are doing here at Volt's. And there was a lot of things that we were doing here at Volt's. We are officially, I would say that we are officially in phase two, to establish a team. We want to formalize our program. And that kind of really needs to adopt a philosophy and now to put some legs to it, to develop that program and move forward. Ms. Yezzy and I have talked a lot about things over in Bingham and Downey. And to be honest with you, they adopting the Bucket Filler Program really jumped ahead way to where we are hopefully getting by the end of this year. And that's something that doesn't always happen. It was a natural kind of buy-in, and they fell into creating a currency, and kids buying into it, staff buying into it, parents love it. It has become a huge deal. We've developed a little bit of plan. We've begun to verify our resources and find out where we can get money. There's a little bit of crossover in phase three as well because that's where your program has been built and you're now moving purposely forward. We want to build some of that support here. We'll talk about building support with you tonight. My hope is now we're going to move into building support with our staff. We're gonna introduce some ideas to kids by the end of this year so that coming in in September, we've hit the ground running with a lot of that initial support. And then phase three, we're also implementing a program. We want to start that now and really kind of hit the ground running in the next, in the next school year. Our Volt's team is here. I didn't know if I wanted to put all of our names there. But I tried to get a smattering of men and women, upper-level grades, lower-level grades, people that have certain specified skills. We have a counselor on there, we have a school nurse on there, we have a PE teacher. So I really try to kind of diversify the team, knowing that it's gonna be something we're gonna utilize later on. And these guys are, you know, really excited about the future. This is a lot on the slide. I apologize, I broke the seven-seven rule. I wouldn't let my kids slide on this one if I were teaching this. But basically, to develop our philosophy, we are, and I'm gonna point you to a couple of huge ideas, but it's to foster the development of caring, responsible, respectful students who make the choice that will contribute constructively to their community, families, and their community at large. That again is the overarching kind of idea to character education. We want to create, the last sentence that the team really loved to, as we've developed it, was to become productive, respectful citizens, have positive character traits that become lifelong habits. Not just while you're here at Volt's, not while you're in high school, not while you're over Bingham or Downey or whatever. It's for lifelong habits. And that's kind of where we grow that philosophy. That philosophy is available online through the link on our Character Ed on the website so you can check it out a little bit more and read more if it's there. Some of our goals for this year, Character Ed goals. One was to develop a common line that promotes connecting good character traits to discipline and choices that students make. We wanted to be able to say, are you making a good choice right now? Are you being respectful? Do you care about, you know, the way you're acting right now? And what we did was we developed what we're gonna roll out at the end of this year, a little bit in the spring of this year, HAWK's Reach for Success. We want our students to actively engage in reaching for success. And the acronym REACH stands for respect. Showing that you care about how your words and actions affect other people. Respect for me is paramount. You need respect in almost every aspect of your life. So effort, are you trying your best academically, physically, mentally? Attitude, we want to be able to put that back on them, check your attitude here. Is it good for promoting academics? Are you approaching your homework with a good attitude? Caring, that you can be kind, considerate of yourself and others. And that kind of puts it on a little bit more of a global level. And then honesty, showing that you're trustworthy, reliable, dependable person. So those are kind of huge. I know this is a lot to take in. I feel like I'm talking very quickly, I apologize. I hear the door rattle a little bit. Our second goal for this year was to develop a celebration activity or an assembly that ties behavior in absences. And talking with our counselor, this was a great idea, kind of one that escaped me a little bit. But absences and latenesses have been an issue. And I really like to address that moving forward personally. I'm really trying to take an approach that says to our kids, this is unacceptable if you're absent. And it seems to be something that is acceptable in our community a little bit. And I want to make sure we move forward without that. We've developed a race-the-clock type of activity. We have a celebration where we will get together with grade level, we'll play some crazy games. But we will use that as a platform for discussion. And we will ask the kids to reflect on, why are you here? We're up here because you're to school on time every day? We're up here because you don't have any issues with, you know, being late or whatever? And all those kinds of things. We will also this year introduce the idea that HAWK's Reach for Success. So again, I know I've kind of glossed over that a little bit. And the last goal for this year was to get an idea as to where we stand as a community. We surveyed our staff and our kids here. We will probably survey them again at the end of the year, an informal ten-question survey. Very simple questions like, do you feel safe at school? You know, those kinds of things. And some of the prelims, staff took the survey. They were excited about coming to school. They feel that go to conduct is fair and that students treat each other for the most part with respect. And then when you're talking students, they feel that the staff cares about them. It's a big deal coming to school. They feel that they're treated fairly. They feel very safe at school for, I think that's actually four point six. I apologize, that was my one typo. But I left the information at home, so I couldn't quite verify that. So I put four point four to be safe in school, and that they feel that rules for conduct are clear. And it's when you can take some of those, some of the guesswork out of those feelings as it relates to getting in school, you can really do a lot of positive things. In the next couple of years, we'd like to do some more service learning projects. We'd like to promote more student involvement in the activities that we do. Tonight, you'll see some of our student council here tonight. And we're trying to create that idea that students need to be more actively involved in the decisions we do. We'd like to get more involvement in the decision-making going on in our school. We don't just want it to be Mr. Wink and the committee thinks we're gonna involve kids, we're gonna involve parents, we're gonna involve other teachers. I shared with you before that about forty teachers showed up at one of the in-service days that we did to talk about Character Ed. And it was really just kind of an initial meeting, and it was kind of cool. We're also gonna reach out to the community as well for support. I can go to Rotary meetings and ask for a lot of money, apparently they have sitting around. But gaining some support out there is always huge when you can get the word out. You know, and that's what we want our kids to be responsible, respectful citizens. So we want to know that they're doing that and talking to those groups. Letting them know where we are is gonna be a huge component to that. Service learning, we have a lot of things that are going on even now. Some things that we like to tweak, men and women in distinction are really kind of carrying the ball for us here, doing a lot of different things. They just went to the college tour. They're going to Ronald McDonald House. I know one of our girls has reached out to Ms. Yezzy about getting the kids over to do some reading labs in the classrooms. So there's a lot of things that are going on, some other groups, National Human Honor, Society Safety Patrol, Student Development, that are helping out with things like chaperone dances, fourth and fifth grade bingo, turkey trots, you name it. It kind of runs in gathering. And one of our groups, the science team is leading, in charge to kind of make blankets for an animal shelter, local animal shelter for the dogs in the animal shelter, collecting T-shirts and the whole kind of deal. And that is kind of the end of our show. I hate to kind of end it there. If you have questions or thoughts, I certainly love the feedback. Members of the team would as well. I don't want to pretend that we live in an eggshell to where we can't share those things. This is about our community, so eventually it's gonna be about all of us and our input and those kinds of things. So I have a quick minute for maybe any quick questions? I don't know.
I think this is great because I see it as transition. Specialized in doing transitions, but years and years, way back when I started. But that's perfect for our kids, go right in. Because the whole idea is employment after, I dare to have it.
That's right.
You get another chance.
One, how many children are involved in the Med Human Association?
I believe the group is thirty-nine total. Combined, always girls, it's about thirty-nine.
That's specifically eight grade?
Yes.
And is there any projection or ideas for how you will get more of the populace of the school involved in these character activities?
We, just by showing up, they're gonna be involved. And I think, and that's what I said at one point on one of our slides. We want to start to infuse it. Ms. Beta is doing something where she's teaching lessons down in the fourth and fifth grade one day a week. And really kind of beginning to talk about terms like responsible and caring and trustworthy and those kinds of things. And we're gonna kind of ride it. I mean, listen, we have a national opportunity for kids coming from Bingham and Downey this year because they're already starting to be infused with those terms and that terminology. So we want to ride that wave coming into next year and just present them with, you know, no opportunity to kind of say, no, I want to be involved because guess what, you are. So, but we're gonna try to really be creative with some of the things that we do. Letting some of the kids run activities and plan things creates that buy-in that we want from their part. If I say, this is great, they're going, Mr. Wink said this is great. But if I say, hey, one of your classmates gave up an idea to make blankets for a dog shelter, let's do it. Yeah, this is awesome. So we're gonna look for opportunities like that. And letting them have a voice in that is really gonna play a huge part in that. You welcome any other thoughts?
As far as resources, I know under federal law, banks have to put a small percentage of their profits into the community. So we may want to approach TDW Center to see if they would want to give a little.
And I'm available in time if anybody has any questions. Please feel free.
Thank you very much. Oh, I thought we were clapping because you were gonna do a trick or something. All right, this time then, we'll need a motion to adjourn the work session.
I make a motion.
Motion by my Brian, second by Pat, all in favor?
Aye.